All right, well, good morning Sabbath School. How is everyone? Good, it seems this, I think at least for me, it's been a month since I've seen most of you all, so. Amen for that, amen for that. So, uh, not sure if anybody's online yet, but otherwise, let's just pray to open up Sabbath School and then we'll start our discussion. Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you once again for allowing us to be here after some weeks away for some of us. Dear Lord, we thank you for all your blessings. And now, as we're into a new quarter and we're studying the book of Ephesians, Father, I'm asking that you would enlighten us, open our hearts and minds to help us realize and understand how you see us and all the blessings that can be found in you. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen. All right, so we're on Lesson Two and we are studying the book of Ephesians. The title of this lesson was "God's Grand Christ-Centered Plan." The memory verse, the text taken from the first chapter was, "Blessed be the God of our Father and our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us in Christ with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places." Now, let's do a quick backup for a moment and just kind of look at a broader picture. We got the, what we call the Book of Ephesians, but ultimately Ephesians is a letter written by an individual named Paul to a church in Ephesus. And do we have an understanding as to what the intent Paul had with this letter? What was, what was Paul trying to do? He was writing a letter to a group of people to be read publicly. What was, what was just the general purpose of what he was trying to do? Do we have any ideas or thoughts on why Paul would have written this letter at all?
Well, it's for you to do, to hold, study, and go forward fast to the next one.
Okay, so the comment here was to encourage them and to hold fast in the profession of their faith, to study. What else?
Well, wasn't there some of the compliments to say, "Well, I got baptized by Paul," or "I got baptized by someone else," and they, he was concerned that there may be some false teaching entering the church? And he wanted to encourage them to stay true to the gospel?
Um, well, so we do know that there were some false teaching going on in Ephesus, Asia Minor, but that particular region or that area had an issue. Is anybody online? Hold on, hold on, just, we're gonna have you start again, I'm not sure who that is, we just need you to speak up louder because we're not getting the volume correctly for you. So, try again now. Uh, this is a phone number, so I'm not sure who that is. And they may have, they, they dropped off, so, um, okay. Sorry about that, folks. All right, so Ephesus was dealing with an issue. This was a culture steeped with, at least they had the influence of, of many different gods. There was a lot of different types of idol worship going on. So, Paul is generally writing this letter to this church to remind them of something because he initially went into this region, this was not, he had gone to Ephesus a few times. So, by the time he's writing this letter, he'd already had some missionary journeys into this region. And so, they had been converted over from individuals coming from the idea of worshiping many different gods to worshiping the true God, right? So, now he's writing them a letter to remind them of who they are in Christ. And I was actually in a little bit of a discussion this morning with my wife, and I made her late because of it, so she's not here yet. But we were asking each other the question, and, and maybe this is where we can start, is if I were to ask you to introduce yourself, what would you say? Ten seconds or less? What would you say?
Name, where I'm from.
Name, where you're from? What else? What would you say if I asked you to introduce yourself?
I'm here by the grace of Jesus.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's a legitimate question. Now, if I were to ask you, "Who are you in Christ?" What would you tell me? What does that mean? To say that you are something in Christ? Is it different from being just who you are?
Yes.
How so? And do you have a mic on this?
Here, here, let me give that to you.
I think there's one on each side.
The difference of who you are and who you are in Christ is when Christ is in you, you know about Christ, you practice what Christ tells you to do, you read His word, you pray, and you commit yourselves to Him every day, and you get to know how to deal with people and to live in this world. That's the difference.
Okay.
Myself, who I am, is a sinner, but who I am in Christ is a sinner saved by grace.
Okay, okay. That's, that's a very powerful statement. Any, any other thoughts either from the folks online as to who you are or who you are in Christ? Because that is really the meat of what we're gonna be discussing here today. That's what Paul was trying to, no, you can hold on to it, I have this one. That's what Paul was trying to convey in his letter, that you are individuals that have been saved to something and for something. You're not just really here by chance or circumstance, you're not of no value, you're of great value, right? So, when we're talking about a, a Christ-centered plan, a grand Christ-centered plan, and the idea of being in Christ or having a blessing in Christ or because of Christ, that's significant. Let's look at Sunday's lesson. It says, "Chosen and accepted in Christ." You know, we're, we're just kind of looking at this first chapter of Ephesians. And one of the things that I noticed really early, when Paul is talking about the individual Jesus, Jesus Christ, Christ Jesus, our Lord, he puts a high amount of reverence on the name. It's never just simply this guy, Jesus. It's always Christ Jesus. So, with the Christ, you attach the idea of the Messiah, that meaning. With the Lord, you attach somebody who is supreme, sovereign, above you, right? There's always this level of respect and reverence in regards to the name. It's never just simply Jesus by itself. That's, I found that very interesting. But Sunday's lesson leads us to the idea of chosen and accepted in Christ. Let's take a, take a look at some of the, the paragraphs here because I think it allows us to kind of understand exactly what Paul was trying to convey to his initial audience. Sunday starts off as a, a thank you note usually includes a description of the gift or gifts received. Paul includes a long gift list in Ephesians 1, 3 through 14 as he thanks God for the blessings of the gospel. We'll take a time, we'll pause and maybe read that in a second, but I want to continue. Paul praises God for the fact that he has blessed us in Christ with every spiritual blessing. That the blessings are spiritual suggests that they come through the Spirit, pointing to the closing of Paul's blessing, which celebrates the work of the Holy Spirit in the lives of the believer. Now, we have to ask our, ask ourselves, there's a lot of blessings that Paul is talking about that his audience has received, but he indicates that they're in a particular place. Where is that place? Paul said it.
A particular blessing?
No, no. He said, "The readers have been blessed," right? But those blessings are in a particular location, a particular place. What did he say? Let's read it again, I, I actually, let's read the text. "Blessed be the God of our Father and our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ." Why is the heavenly places significant? What could that even mean? I mean, we're, we're here on earth, we have a comment in the bag. Do you have a mic back there, John, or no?
Yes.
As you say, basically, you're talking about the sanctuary in his office as the high priest in heaven.
Okay, okay.
Verse three, Ephesians 1, verse three.
"So blessed be the God of our Father and our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus." Now, obviously, at that point in time, Christ is no longer on the earth, but we as individuals, we are here on the earth. And when we consider our blessings, oftentimes, as humans, we're looking for tangible things normally, right? Or things that we can see, or hear, or understand, or grasp, or visualize, or be impacted by. But Paul says that we have all these spiritual blessings in the heavenly places. So, what could we possibly reason or think is going on in the heavenly places? Any idea? There has to be something going on there because Christ is there versus humans being here on the earth. Yes, John?
Um, he's carrying out his high priest function. He's in, at that time, he's in the holy, in the holy place. And now, after 1844, he's in the most holy place.
So, and, and John is right on point, he's on track because remember, the title of the lesson is "God's Grand Christ-Centered Plan." If God has a plan, we need to possibly understand as Christians, where are we in the plan? Right? To understand the blessings, you gotta know where you are in the plan. Are you in the beginning of the plan, the end of the plan, the middle of the plan? Uh, is there a particular sequence going on in the plan? I mean, if you're at work and you're doing something, working on a project, to, to order to understand what's going on, you gotta know what step you're at. Where do you fit in? You know, what contributions do you need to make or is somebody making for all of this to work together? Right? So, the reader needs to understand what Christ is doing in these heavenly places in order for there to be some or many spiritual blessings. And actually, the word that is used is that every spiritual blessing, right? So, there has to be a difference in regards to what's happening here on earth, how we see ourselves here on earth versus what's happening actually in Christ, in the heavenly places because ultimately, and Paul alludes in this first chapter, in this prayer, that through Christ or in Christ, all things are going to be connected, the things in heaven as well as the things on earth. And as an audience, whether we are the initial audience, the church in Ephesus and the initial hearers, or here we are today, we still need to understand where we fall into that grand central Christ-centered plan. Let's continue in Sunday. So, we're, we're talking about in the heavenly places, um, and it asks us to maybe point to, to some verses below. So, we're, we're staying in Ephesians, so we can kind of just flip to that book if, if you have your Bibles open. We read Ephesians 3, Ephesians 1, verse 3, which is also a memory text, but let's take a look at some of the others because in the heavens, or that phrase, in heavenly places, is used in the other couple of points in the book of Ephesians, in this letter of Ephesians that Paul is writing. Let's maybe look at, take a look at Chapter 2, verse 6.
Okay, I'll read verse 6.
Chapter 2, verse 6, yes.
But before I read verse 6, I would like to read verse, verse 5.
Okay, sure, go ahead, that's fine. Verse 5 and 6, go ahead.
Having predestinated us into the adoption of, of Himself according to the good pleasures of His will.
Oh, we're on, we want Chapter 2, not, we're, we're gonna come back to Chapter 1, but we're talking about in the heavenly places.
Oh, in chapter?
Yeah, yeah, Chapter 2.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Verse 6. And then if somebody can find, um...
Chapter 2 and verse?
Yep, verse 6.
Verse 6.
Yep, somebody find Chapter 3, verse 10.
It says here. And has raised us up together and made us sit together in heavenly places in Christ Jesus.
Okay, so continuing on that theme, we got some action going on, some individuals being brought together, made to sit together in the heavenly places. All right, let's continue, let's, does anybody have 3, verse 10? Yes.
So that through the church, the manifold wisdom of God might now be made known to the rulers and authorities in the heavenly places.
Hmm, all right, so we, we got a lot of stuff going on here, right? We got more individuals being named or recognized, right? So, in Chapter 1, we at least heard that all of our spiritual blessings are in Christ in the heavenly places. Then in Chapter 2, we're given the understanding that individuals are being brought together, being able to sit together in the heavenly places. Chapter 3, verse 10, Sister Akats read that there are even rulers in the heavenly places? We gotta start to break this down because with each facet that you're adding to this kind of picture as to what's going on, we gotta know where we fit in, right? I mean, we got, understanding is key because when you understand what's going on, you can understand the blessing. You understand the blessing, you understand the plan that Christ has for us. But before we get a little bit deeper, let's do a comparison because they asked us to compare those type of verses, we'll, we'll pass on 6, verse 12, to the use of "in the heavens." So, let's stay in Chapter 3, let's look at verse 15. Ephesians 3, 15. I have it here, so I'll read it, and then somebody can find Chapter 4, verse 10, and then we'll also look at Chapter 6, verse 9. So, 3:15. "From whom the whole family in heaven and earth is named." I, I guess I should actually read 14. "So for this reason I bow my knees to the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, from whom the whole family in heaven and earth is named." All right, we're gonna think about that, but let's, let's kind of just read the other verses just so we can kind of grab a big picture. Does anybody have Chapter 4, verse 10?
I'll read verse 10. It says here, "He that descended is the same also that ascended up."
Mm-hmm, you're right, come on, ascended.
Ascended up from far above all heavens, that he might fill all things.
Okay, all right, and Chapter 6, verse 9. And if we have any of our participants online, we want to include you too, you're more than welcome to, to read if you have it.
Chapter 6, verse 9. "Not with eye service as man pleasures, but as the servant of Christ, doing the will of God from the heart."
Are you in Chapter 6?
Chapter 6, verse 6.
Verse 9.
Oh, verse 9.
9, yeah, 6, verse 9.
"And ye masters do the same things unto them, for bearing threatening, knowing that your master also is in heaven; neither is there respect of persons with him."
All right, so let's, let's kind of compare as to what's going on. So, we have in the heavenly places, people, things going on, all right? When, and actually, we'll, we'll compare 6, verse 9 to 12, verse 9, which we know very well, says, "For we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against rulers of the darkness of this age, against spiritual hosts of wickedness in the heavenly places." I'll ask again. What is, or maybe where is, the heavenly places? Because we're, we're talking about a lot of things going on. Yes, John?
Again, it's, the heavenly places are the departments of the sanctuary, the temple in heaven.
Okay, is it only the sanctuary based off of the text that we've read?
No, it's, who's, the earth is the court, the earth is the court.
Could you review Chapter 3, verse 10?
Okay, let's go back to that.
And explain it a little bit and, and how it relates to the following verses that we followed, 14 and 15 and 14, 10.
Sure, all right, so we're, we're kind of comparing the phrase "in the heavenly places" versus "in the heavens." It's asking us to compare those two. So, we're kind of looking at a general idea of a spiritual realm, so to speak, versus in comparing it, or at least contrasting it to a physical place, which is also a physical place, right? Because we're, we're getting the understanding that particular actions are going on, but let's read it again. So, we're, we're talking about...
Elder Martin, could I read it in another version?
Sure, sure, that'd be great, that's fine.
The New, The New Living Translation says, "God's purpose in all this was to use the church to display His wisdom in its rich variety to all the unseen rulers and authorities in the heavenly places."
Right, so we, we gotta ask a question as to unseen rulers in the heavenly places. So, are we, are we questioning, are you asking about who are the other groups being listed? Because it...
The authorities, is that, is that saving? Is that the great controversy?
It is. So, we have, we, um, we're gonna get a little bit deep here. So, when we're talking about everything, all creation that's witnessing what's happening here on earth, or the struggle of what's happening here on earth, we're not the only group that's witness to this great controversy. We have understandably, definitely intelligent created beings in heaven, angels that have not fallen, as well as fallen angels that are somewhere else, kicked out of heaven. We have the understanding of other worlds that are created and possibly inhabitants on those worlds witnessing and watching what's happening. And when we kind of compare Scripture of the Bible and looking back and forth, we get even the sense of going back to Job, right? Where the sons of God are coming to present themselves in heaven, right? So, we have quote-unquote rulers from many different places because God has a government, right? He has a governmental system, and it has border, it has structure, he has given positions to beings that he has created to fulfill particular purposes for his glory. Yes, John?
As I say, a small, just a small sample of that you can find in the book of Revelation. When you see the different elders and, these are the 24 elders and stuff, these are people from, you know...
Possibly, right? Yeah, so there's, to put a name or to say a, a face to every individual as to, you know, who this one is, who that is, possibly can't do it. But we know that there is a system in place that God has set up, governmental system where he has individuals watching, the morning to you, and participating in this whole plan as witnesses. And some of them are fighting and praying on our behalf, right? Because we know that there's a battle going on, right? There's not necessarily just flesh and blood, but there's a spiritual battle going on that has to be taking place in a realm that we physically can't touch and see. Any other thoughts or questions regarding this? Because this is a lot to, to kind of put together, right? But this is all part of our identity in Christ, in Christ. All right, um, now, let's go back to Chapter 1 again. Let's look at verse 4 of Ephesians, Chapter 1, verse 4. Does anybody have that that would like to read it? I do have it here, but just want to keep involvement and participation to a high.
Even before he made the world, God loved us and chose us in Christ to be holy and without blame and desire.
All right, does, thank you for that version. Let's hear it in another version because we want to answer the question at the end of Sunday, and we want to...
King James Version, I have King James.
King James, yeah, that's fine, let's go ahead.
Ephesians 1, verse 4.
Ephesians 1, verse 4.
According as he hath chosen us in him before the foundation of the world, that we should be holy and without blame before him in love.
Okay, so the question at the end of Sunday says, dwell on Ephesians 1, verse 4, which says that we have been chosen in him, that him being Christ, before the foundation of the world. What does that mean? How does it reveal to us God's love for us and his desire for us to be saved? Remember, the title of the lesson is "God's Grand Christ-Centered Plan." But yet, Paul is indicating that we were chosen before the foundation of the world. What does that mean? How does that work out?
God has, God, as you just said, God has a plan for us. And before he created the world, even before we think of making man, he had a plan when he make man, where they would begin and where they would end up. So, God has whole, have all this thing planned, whole plan for our life, planned out. When we'll be in heavenly places, he will bring us to sit in heavenly places, when we'll be going to tribulation, when we will deny him, and so forth. God has a plan for us.
Okay. Let me ask a question. Oh, there's a comment here? Let, let, let me see your thoughts on this. God had a plan. When God started with the creation of heaven, do you think God's plan was that his highest ranking angel would dissent? And...
No.
No, okay. God has a plan. Do you think when God created the earth, he got down to the sixth day, he created Adam and Eve? Do you think his plan included that they would be deceived? That's a reasonable, you know, I see a comment over here, I was gonna ask another question, but go ahead, John.
I feel he was aware, he, he already prepared for, he, you know, he knows all things anyway, he's omniscient. So, but, but he, it didn't have to happen, but if they did, he had a plan already prepared before time eternity to take care of it.
Okay, okay. So, this should be an easy question. Does the fact that we have choice, free will, does that thwart God's plan? Or does God have to then develop multiplicity of plans in order to complete his will? And why, why is, yes, Sister Shaw?
God was prepared to make a decision either for him or against him, but that plan was before he created the world. So, God more knew, he wants us to understand that we have a choice.
Hmm, okay. All right, we're, we're really going somewhere with this, right? So, this is a lot to think about. It's not just a, a lighthearted letter as to, you know, serve God, love God. You have value, we have value because God had a plan for us. He chose us, right? Can we use the Mac right in front of you?
What awakens love and me more for him is because, it's hard for us to grasp, when he, he looks at you, he looks at me, he looks at everybody in here, he knows exactly what we're gonna do. He knows the, he knew what Lucifer was going to do. He knew what Adam and Eve was going to do. Yet, now for us, we could have said, I, I always think about this, and I always think about this with children. I said, "Lord, if we knew, if we had a child and we knew that child was gonna grow up to be a horrible person, if we knew that before, would we have that child? Probably not." But God knew what we were going to do, he gave us his choice, and he still loves us, and he did everything he can possibly do to save us. That is so much love that we'll never be able to grasp.
We'll spend eternity trying to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any thoughts from online? Or is, all right, let's, let's turn, let's turn over to...
The only thing is amen.
Okay, amen, amen. Let's turn to Monday because we want to build on this idea of how much value we have to God. Monday, costly redemption, lavish forgiveness. Let's just kind of read this first paragraph here. It says, "Sin had been a dark dominating force in the lives of the members of Paul's audience." So, we're talking about the church in Ephesus. Paul can describe them in their prior existence as walking in dead, or dead in trespasses and sins. Yet, walking or living as Satan commanded them, enslaved to sin and Satan, they had no ability to free themselves. They needed rescue. God has done so through his gracious actions in Christ. Hear that again, "in Christ." And Paul celebrates two new blessings of God's grace in the lives of believers, redemption and forgiveness. All right, so the idea of forgiveness, that's generally easy to understand, right? We've been hurt before, we've had our... We've been hurt before, um, we've had our, you know, something unfairly done to us. And at times, I know we've all forgiven someone, right? So we, we understand that component. The idea of redemption, can humans experience that? What does that mean? Have you ever redeemed something? Well, have you ever lost something and then you had to reclaim it? What, what, give me an example. What, I mean, it could be an object, right? I mean, I, I can think of, sometimes people fall on hard times, they take stuff to a pawn shop, uh, wait till they get their money back and then they buy it back or something like that. Yes, Sister Latang, if you-
I- I lost my glasses almost six months, the same one I have here. I had to walk.
Hold it close.
I had to end up buying a reading glasses.
Okay.
And long after that time, I was looking for something else, and I redeemed my glasses. I got, I got back my glasses, and I was very happy. I didn't have to use a reading glass anymore. Is that something-
Well, so you found your glasses or you had to redeem them. So the idea with redeeming something is that it costs-
Okay.
-you something.
Okay.
Whether it costs you time, whether it costs you blood, sweat, and tears, work, effort, money. It costs you something if you're going to redeem someone or something. It's different than being given something or finding something, um, that you, that you've lost.
I remember redeeming top-value stamps, S&amp;H green stamps, and going to the store and redeeming books.
Okay, okay. Anybody have any experiences with redeeming something? And what it costs them to redeem it? Maybe it's a broken relationship.
Would this be-
Yes, yes, online?
Would this be an example, like, um, I sing, and, um, I practice this song, and I knew the words, right? But when I got up to sing Thursday, I messed up. So, I, every since then, I'm saying, "Okay, I have to redeem myself." You know, I know the words to this song, so I'm not gonna give up. I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna do it right, and I'll read all the words and redeem myself.
Right, so in that sense, I, I get the understanding that you feel or may have felt that when you messed up possibly the first time, that maybe you lost your reputation or your confidence as a public singer or whatnot. You know, something was missing. And you had the drive or the desire to then work harder and practice, which took effort in order to either regain your public confidence or your, um, persona perception from others by performing better. Is, is that kinda the understanding as to what you're communicating?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Even though the audience, you know, they didn't really know the song, and everybody, if I had screwed my face up, they probably wouldn't know I had fucked. But in my heart, I knew, that I knew the words, but I'd get the stage, I guess. So I am gonna do it again, and I'm gonna get it right, and I'm gonna redeem myself.
Yeah, yeah, no, personal confidence is some things that we have to redeem as, as humans, right? In our own lives and walk, you know? Um, we know that we can do something better than we actually did it, so we, we kinda go back to the drawing board and figure some things out, and we wanna give ourselves a better chance or another chance. But let's, let's kinda continue to harp on this idea of redeemed, because Christ redeemed us. But it cost Him something. What did it cost Him? I didn't hear- His life. So, and, and this, we should probably know this, why did it have to cost Him his life?
He became our substitute. We could not redeem ourselves, because we had sinned. And God's law requires a perfect life. And since we were no longer perfect, Christ volunteered to come into this world, become like us, live a perfect life, life. But the law required death, because the wages of sin is death. But Jesus said, "I will be a substitute for them." So He came in, lived a perfect life, and redeemed us by His blood when He sacrificed Himself for us.
Any other thoughts on that? We're talking about we had to have a substitute of a perfect life. And we said that perfect life was Christ. If I were to say, "Well, why couldn't Gabriel do it? Wasn't he still perfect? Isn't he still perfect?" Gabriel the angel.
He was a creator and an angel. The law is, is-
Right in front of you. I just wanna make sure we understand this.
A law was a, the law is a transcript of God's character. Jesus is God, the, so, and the only person that can recreate, or, 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 uh, what did Kathy say? Um, um, the word is gone from me. The only person that can redeem us through, through that law is a person who had created it. It was His character. He's the only one that could do it. An angel couldn't do it. And they, they asked, "Let me do it, let me do it."
Right.
Adam and Eve said, "No, let us just die for ourselves." No, if they did that, they wouldn't be saved. Only the person whose, the law is a transcript of their character could die for us.
A life for a life?
Yes.
But a perfect life?
Yes.
Perfect life. And I wanna keep driving this home, because it's easy for us to sometimes take for granted the cost that was paid for us. I think that's sometimes why we struggle with who we are. We wrestle with what is going on in the world, with what we know we ought to do in Christ. Because sometimes we take for granted exactly how much it costs God in order to redeem us. You think about the relationships that we've had in this world. Think about personal, close relationships, whether it be a sibling, parent, child relationship, cousin, some, a dear friend. And something happens to create a rift. Sometimes, if you really love that individual, you're willing to almost do anything to mend the relationship. Oftentimes, you'll see individuals suffer abuse unnecessarily to try and mend a relationship. When we read the Gospels, we know that Christ unfairly suffered abuse in order to mend the relationship with humanity. So it cost Him a lot, His life, His dignity, His divinity, because He took it off for a moment, right? To, to take on man's image. Um, it, it caused Him the position of being with His Father, right? He was separated from His Father because of sin. It cost Him a lot. When we think about the things that cost us a lot in our own lives and how we're willing to sacrifice those things just to mend a relationship, that's part of the psyche or the mentality that we have to have when we think about what Christ is doing for us and why He had this whole grand-centered Christ plan to redeem and reconnect all things that were created by Him, created for Him, to then continue to consist in Him, to give Him glory, right? He wants to put this all back together under the will of, or I should say, under the will, but with the understanding of all of creation, intelligent creation has free choice, right? And our free choice is either to choose what Christ has already devised and set up and planned or not. It is not a matter of Christ created some, some of us to go to hell. Doesn't mean any of that. It simply means that He had a plan in place that was, that His plan was predestined. Our free will was not, right? Here's a question here, please use the mic.
When we say, um, we were predestined to-
No, no, I didn't say we were predestined. I said Christ had a predestined plan.
Or a plan before.
Yeah, yeah, so- The confusion is, sometimes people interpret that, or they believe individuals were predestined to either go to one place or another. That is not what Paul is indicating by any means. Christ's plan was predestined. It existed before the foundation of the world. So when Christ's plan is revealed to us, we are presented with one of two choices. Not one of ten choices, not one of three choices, one of two choices. We can accept Christ and His grace, or we can go our own way. Those are the two choices. Any more thoughts from those online? Let's, uh, kinda talk about this idea of redemption coupled with forgiveness. Uh, I wanna read the last paragraph on Monday. It says, "The benefits of Calvary also include the forgiveness of our trespasses. On the cross, Christ takes upon Himself the price of our sin, both past, present, and future, canceling the record of debt that stood against us with its legal demands. In doing so, this work of redemption and forgiveness through Christ, God is acting as our generous Father with the riches of His grace being lavished upon us." Let's read, uh, Colossians two, fourteen. Can somebody find that for us quickly? Colossians two, verse fourteen. Because-
By canceling the record of debt that stood against us with its legal demands, this He set aside, nailing it to the cross.
All right. We gotta understand what is being talked about here, right? Because Paul, once again, is saying something was nailed to the cross, meaning it's been done away with. What is this record of debt? What is he talking about? We gotta be clear on this, because there's a lot of interpretation that what Paul is talking about is the Ten Commandments. That can't be. So what is Paul talking about? We gotta figure this out.
The law contained ordinance that's subject to ceremonial laws.
How can we prove it? There is a text. We gotta find the text. Because we gotta be clear on this. We're gonna go to the book of Deuteronomy. We gotta find this text. Because we gotta understand that something was done away with. I mean, that's what the Bible says. It was nailed to the cross, something was done away with. Yes, John?
The law of Moses, according to ordinances, was done away with. But not the law, not the law of God, that's eternal.
Okay, so let's- I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, pull it up here in a second. It's, uh, Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-one, twenty-six. Thirty-one, twenty-six, let's just quickly go there. And, 'cause we should always have the proof, right? That way, when we're explaining this, uh, folks know what we're talking about. Yeah, thirty-one, uh, twenty-six, uh, blah, 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 blah. So here it is. So take this book of the law and put it beside the ark of the covenant of the Lord your God, that it may be there as a witness against you. So there we had that same language, writing against you, witness against you, right? And we have a physical picture of what's going on. We have the ark of the covenant. The ark of the covenant was what? Well, the ark of the covenant contained the Ten Commandments. Where did it contain the Ten Commandments? Physically, physically, where- Inside. Now, this book of the law that's being described, where physically is that? Based off of Deuteronomy thirty-six? Twenty-six. It's on the outside. So we can't be talking about the Ten Commandments, which are inside the box, versus the law of Moses, which were on the outside or the side of the box. Those are two different things, right? So when we go back to Colossians two, fourteen, and what Paul is talking about, canceling out this record of debt, nailing it to the cross, he is talking about all the ordinances or the prescriptions. So initially, we got the Ten Commandments given to the children of Israel. The Ten Commandments are a description of sin. God created the world, He tells us what sin is. Immediately following that, we start getting into ordinances and things that God communicated specifically to the children of Israel as to how they were to deal with certain sins. So you have an issue, this is the prescription for dealing with that issue.
Elder Martin?
Yes, Sister Shaw?
Read, read verse twenty-four.
Of Deuteronomy thirty-one?
Yes.
Okay, verse twenty-four. "So it was when Moses had completed writing the words of this law in a book, when they were finished, that Moses commanded the Levites, who bore the ark of the covenant of the Lord, saying..." Then we get to verse twenty-six. So we have Moses doing the writing of this law, but it was communicated by, by God. But what we have is, God communicated the Ten Commandments. He gave Moses this law to give to, administer to the, the nation of Israel as to how they were to deal with issues regarding breaking each of those commandments.
And could I add?
Yes.
The, the law of God was written by God Himself on tables of stone, while this instruction that He gave Moses on how to treat each other and all those things that went along with that, uh, was written by Moses, and that's what's known as the law of Moses.
Right.
The law of God is the law of God.
Right, so the Ten Commandments, written by the finger of God, versus when we look at the law of Moses, and particularly look at what Paul said in Colossians two, fourteen, you have the handwriting, referring to a human individual, handwriting of, of debt that was set against us. So we just wanna make sure that we understand that, yeah, today, we don't have animal sacrifices. Today, we don't, uh, get involved in, in certain ordinances that were initially done by the, the children of Israel, because those were nailed to the cross. And actually, Christ's life, all of those things were a foreshadowing of Christ. And Christ fulfilled all of those things, all of those, those feasts, all of those ordinances, all those sacrificial, uh, requirements in regards to, you know, animals that were slaughtered on the altar. He fulfilled all of that. So that's why we don't do those things. But the Ten Commandments is not a part of that prescription. The Ten Commandments is simply a description of sin. And now, our new prescription for that sin is faith in Jesus Christ and accepting the grace that He has extended to us. That's the new covenant, that's the new prescription. But the description of sin still remains the same. If you murdered back then, you murdered today, same description. You commit adultery back then, commit adultery today, same description. You steal back then, steal today, same description. But the prescription as to how you deal with that sin is Jesus Christ. Faith in Jesus Christ. Tuesday, we gotta move on, gotta move on. Let's look at Ephesians, chapter one again, we're still there. And now we wanna talk about the concept of time. Let's look at verses nine and ten, the concept of time. I'll read it. "Having made known to us the mystery of His will, according to His good pleasure, which He purposed in Himself, that in the dispensation of the fullness of time, He might gather together in one, all things in Christ, both which are in heaven and which are on the earth in Him." I think there were some big words in there. Somebody help me understand what dispensation is. It says, it started off, "Having made known to us the mystery of His will, according to His good pleasure, which He purposed in Himself, that in the dispensation." What does that mean? What is the dispensation? Yes, John?
It can mean, it can mean era, a time, a, a era of time. Uh, you know, like a disposition means-
When you say era, are you saying E-A-R, era?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, so an era of time, all right? Some, some other thoughts? What is, what is dispensation? Because we gotta understand this fullness of time, right? What does, what is this fullness of time gonna encompass possibly? Remember, we're talking about a plan. A plan takes some time to execute. But ultimately, a plan has to be executed, and then it comes to an end. So the fullness of time has to include the breadth or the entirety of this plan being executed. Does that part make sense? Now, let's back up and still try to understand, 'cause I wanna hear from somebody. What is dispensation? And if it's okay for the folks that are online, pull up Google or your dictionary and tell us what the word means. us what the word means. Because it's, it's, it's okay. Oh, we're just.
It says exemption from ru- a rule or unusual requirement. And the second one is a system of order, government or organization of a nation, community, et cetera, especially as existing at a particular time. I think the first one, exemption from a rule.
Very good.
Unusual requirement.
Yes, read, read that first definition for us one more time, please.
But it says exemption from a rule or unusual requirement. And they, they have a sentence. Although she was too young, she was gi- given special dispensation to play two matches.
All right, that should kind of help us understand a little bit. So exemption from a rule. Christ's law had a requirement. If you break the law, what was the requirement? Or what was the penalty? Death, right? Now, what Paul is indicating is that an exemption is being made or given. How could that be? How can an exemption be made for me? It can only be made because Christ fulfilled the requirement of that same law. So part of this whole grand plan, Christ-centered plan in the fullness of time, is that he's going to fulfill the requirement, grace is going to be extended to me, so that in the fullness of time, I don't have to bear the dispensation of the law. I don't have to bear the penalty of the law. So I ask you again, what does it mean to you as a Christian to be in Christ? Who does that say you are? I heard a whisper that said special over here. It means, okay, but it means. Being bought with a price. But what does that mean to you? Yeah, I, I know that what it means generally. I mean, does, does that have value to you? Does that, how does that make you feel? Poss- possibly, that's the better question. How does that make you feel to know that somebody cared for you, that they were willing to die in your place? How does that make you feel?
Gives us hope.
Okay, gives you hope, but.
And in, you know, and to feel more confident.
Just think in general terms. I mean, we've seen a superhero movie before, we have a hero, right? And we've seen uh somebody in a movie, jump in front of a, somebody, and they either took a bullet or uh stood in front of a moving car for somebody else. What sense does that garner in the individual? John, you had a thought?
I was going to say, it gives you value. It gives you uh life, your life has more value, that you're unique, it's unique, that you're brought into a, to the, you know, on, that you're, you're special to God, that you're that, he loves you that much.
Uh, there's a comment here, could we get a, a mic to the lady in red? And let's, and let's kind of expound upon John's thought that what does it mean when you understand that you have value? Does it change your behavior at all? For lady in red, good morning.
I think that it gives you a sense of belonging.
A sense of belonging?
Yeah.
Okay. And when you feel that you belong to something, do you behave differently?
Yeah.
For you, what, what would, what would change?
Um, like your whole attitude.
Yeah, okay.
My change.
Sure.
Yeah, your appearance.
Possibly, okay, okay. Yeah, look, there, there's just no right or wrong answer. I'm just saying, when, when people feel loved, a real sense of love, they respond to it, right? There, there's so many emotions that we respond to, and love is one of them. When we, we care for somebody or we realize somebody cares for us deeply, we behave differently around them. We respect them differently than somebody that we don't know. Marilyn, yes?
It makes me feel like royalty.
Wow. Okay.
Knowing that, you know, somebody paid the price that I could not pay at all. It makes me feel special, and because there is such great value, you know, I cannot put a price on it, you know, a price tag, you know, I, I have a different, you know, mentality, attitude towards life and um just towards people, you know, how I interact with people, how I, you know, treat people, you know? So it just gives me that, it puts me on a, on a higher level, but not with arrogance, you know, still with that spirit of humility, you know, to show people that they too can have it, they could have that same, you know, feeling and assurance and hope that I have, and they could get it freely just by submitting, believing, and, you know, trusting in, in, in God and accepting that, that gift that he has given to us freely.
Wow, you said a lot. Yeah, probably, yeah, yeah.
It makes me want to do whatever I can to please him. It, I will always remember it, and my thoughts would be, how, what can I do continually to just show my gratitude? It makes, and, and whatever, it's just whatever I do, whatever, I, I go back to my mother, that I, that I, um, she died when I was fifteen, but she, she showed me so much love that I would get up. Back then, we didn't have garbage bags, you know, so you just threw your garbage in there. I enjoyed getting up, cleaning out the garbage can, because that's what she liked. I washed the walls and I got on my knees and did all of the hardwood floors by myself because that's what she liked. And, and I just wanted to continue to do that, and I was only like thirteen and fourteen years old. So when I think of Jesus and what he did for me, it makes me say, I want to do anything. I want to be with him, I'm his child, I want to live with him forever, and I'd rather die than hurt him.
Love is the greatest motivator. But Marilyn made a good point, um, and I want to kind of just touch on it a little bit, because it was brought to my attention very early this morning. So you mentioned in part of your description that the value that you get or the love that you feel, uh, it makes you feel like loyalty, but you also feel humbled in your position where you don't feel arrogant towards anybody else, right? So we still live on this earth and we have people that have freedom of choice, choice to do things that we may or may not agree with, right? But in what Christ has done for us, we shouldn't feel any sort of arrogance that we're better than anybody else, nor can we pass any judgment on anybody else, right? How do we mirror the strong conviction of understanding that what Christ did wasn't just for me, it was for everybody, even if the everybody is not ready to accept that fact or is not aware of that fact or is not as strongly convicted of that fact as you are possibly? What can we do? We got a hand in the back, my queen that's matching me.
You're matching me.
Oh, okay, that's great.
Happy to have everyone. Um, to carry on our discussion from this morning, um, when you love God and, you know, say you're a Christian, it's not about wearing a title, I'm a Christian, these are my beliefs, this is like, everyone has to fall in line and believe what I believe. Um, I think the way God has life set up for us, he will bring it all full circle at some point. The people that you say you don't like or you don't agree with or you don't, those people, at some point, you may need that person in your life. And I always come back to, like, that's why I got into healthcare, my grandmother saying, you never know who's going to give you your last drink of water. You never know. We can dismiss people, we can judge people, we can say, oh, they're not like me, oh, they're, you know, you're on your way to hell because this, that, and the other. But how life works out, you may need that person. That person may be wiping your butt one day. Um, and that person can show compassion towards you, and that is how we have to remember how we treat people, the love of God. Never look down on people, you know, because of their circumstances, because, because not everybody is in the same walk as you. So how we show compassion, I think about like, Jesus wouldn't look down on, you know, the streetwalkers or whatever. He would be talking to them, he would be trying to show his love to those people, not so high and mighty looking down on them and saying, you're not this or you're not that. That's how you show love, is just showing compassion, because that's what God did for us, all of us.
Any other thoughts on how we can express to an individual that they have value? Because Christ died for everybody. So everybody has this great measure, great worth, a life-giving God, it's death worth of value in them. I have it, you have it, um, the beggar has it, the homeless person has it, they all had that same amount of value. Had it just been one person on the earth, they had that value, that Christ was willing to die for one person. Marilyn, you had a thought? Yes?
One of my motives in life is treat people, to treat people the way that I would like to be treated. So it doesn't matter on what level you are in society, I believe people have to be treated with respect, treated like they are human, they are human, and they have a certain, um, they have value. And it's because they are human, they have value, that Christ was willing to die for each and every one of us, regardless of who we are. So I believe, you know, if I treat people the way that I would like to be treated, if we switch places, if I am, you know, homeless, I would want somebody to treat me with respect, with dignity. So I treat people the way that I would like to be treated. And I think, um, with Christ being in my life, in our lives, that light supposed to shine, that, um, in what we do, what we say, how we treat people, you know, people will be able to see Christ in us. We don't even have to say, I am a Christian. Just by the way you speak, the way you react, the way you treat people, people will see that you are different, and then they will, you know, they will just be drawn to you and eventually they realize, okay, that is what, that is who makes the difference in you, it's Christ who makes the difference. This is not, you know, your own righteous works, you know, trying to be good. It's Christ who makes that change, that makes that difference in your life, that you're able to impact people positively and make that big difference in their lives as well.
Amen, amen. We got five minutes, well, four minutes left. Um, just getting to Wednesday, we're not going to make it through, but I want to open it up and just kind of let folks, uh, give us any further thoughts or ideas or words of comfort that they got from the lesson. I mean, we, there was the idea of us being Christ's inheritance and he being our inheritance that was brought out, uh, was also brought out in the lesson of us being sealed by the Holy Spirit, you know? So all these things I know have an impact in, in the Christian walk, and as we continue to study Ephesians, hopefully, we'll hit on more of these ideas and kind of reinforce them in each of the chapters, but draw out. But from today, if there's anything that I would like everyone to know, is that your life has value. Even if I can't say it has value to me, it has value to the most important being in the entire universe, which is God, right? Because my love for you does not exceed God's love for you, right? So I, so I'm saying you're so important that if it was just you and God and some unknown adversary, he would die for you. It's as simple as that. That's the Christ-God-centered plan created from the foundation of the world, that he knew everything that was going to happen, he gave us free choice anyway, and then he set things up so that what he initially, originally created, he was going to bring back together in him. Everything is about him. Any other final thoughts for today from the folks online? Anything that you all would like to add or comment or, or say before we close? All right, well, let's, uh, let's close with prayer and then we'll prepare for the eleven o'clock divine hour. This power heads. Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you once again, that at this point in time, we still have the opportunity to learn about you because of your word, to worship without the fear of persecution, to simply be able to say, we love you because you first loved us. Father, we ask, or I ask, that at this time, you would allow us to be enlightened, to understand how much it is you actually care for us, that we are equal with every human on this earth, that you came and you died for us all to save us from our sins. Father, please forgive us for the times that we take you for granted, for the times that we reject your son and push your spirit away. Please do not give up on us just yet. Father, we need you. Continue to be with us as we study this lesson and continue to be with us throughout this day and this upcoming week, that we would draw closer to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this morning and have a good day.